Okay, all right, so I'm gonna call the meeting to order. It is seven o'clock. And just a quick reminder, if you have electronic devices, please put them on airplane mode, turn them off, or silent, one of the above, or all of the above. And first, I'd like to ask that you join me and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So first, I'm gonna do some introductions, and afterwards, then we will have the swearing in of myself as the continuing mayor, I guess I should say, and then two brand-new council members. So I am Lisa Whalen, I am the mayor, and I'll start with our staff. To my right, we have our city administrator, Mike Barone, our city finance director, Brian Grimm, community development director, David Abel, our chief of police, Paul Falls, and on the end, we have with Kennedy and Graven, our city attorney, Andrew Biggerstaff, he is sitting in for Ron Beatty, who normally is here. And then, to my left, our council members, Patricia Thole, Pam Mortenson, to-be council member, real soon, Michael Maliter, and Shannon Bruce. And then we have our city engineer with WSB, is Paul Hornby, and also with us is our city clerk, Chris Linquist, this evening. So first, our swearing in, then.
I guess we'll just top off.
Well, you need a microphone.
Oh, we're good. Please raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Lisa Whalen.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And to discharge faithfully the duties.
And to discharge faithfully the duties.
Of the office of mayor.
Of the office of mayor.
For the city of Minnetrista, Minnesota.
For the city of Minnetrista, Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Good choice. All right.
Ms. Bruce, why don't you come down first?
And I get the honor of swearing you in. Now that I am official. All right. So you'll just recede after me and raise your right hand, and you'll say "I," and then you'll state your name.
I, Shannon Bruce.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And to discharge faithfully the duties.
And to discharge faithfully the duties.
Of the office of council member.
Of the office of council member.
For the city of Minnetrista, Minnesota.
For the city of Minnetrista, Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations and welcome. Shannon, here is your...
Thank you.
All right, so, Paul. I already told them I apologize in advance, because I often keep calling him Paul. But first, you want to state "I," and then state your name.
I, Michael Maliter.
Michael Maliter. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And to discharge faithfully the duties.
And to discharge faithfully the duties.
Of the office of city council member.
Of the office of city council member.
For the city of Minnetrista, Minnesota.
For the city of Minnetrista, Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
We have a rather young council, not necessarily so much in age, but two new council members, and the two existing council members have two years of experience, so I think we'll have a great council. I'm very excited about the possibilities and opportunities for Minnetrista, and I'm also very excited about some of the other things that are happening, and we'll get to those in just a little bit later regarding commissioners for our parks and planning. So with that, we'll move on to approval of our agenda. Are there any additions or changes? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented? So moved. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion has been made by, motion was made by Ms. Mortenson, and seconded by Ms. Bruce. All those in favor signify with "aye."
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. This evening, we don't have any special presentations, and I have nobody signed up under persons to be heard, so we'll move on to our consent agenda. Consent agenda will, is consisting of, it's approve our regular meeting minutes from December 5th, 2016, approve claims, resolution number 01-17, approve resolution number 02-17, it's a simple subdivision, at 2640 and 2648 Saunders Lake Drive North, and a resolution number 03-17, it's approve the St. Boniface by our service pension level for 2017, and a resolution E is 04-17, approve Hennebun County recycling funding policy agreement for January 1, 2017 through December 31st, 2020. Any questions on the consent agenda? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve a consent agenda A, B, C, D, and E?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion has been made by Ms. Thole, and seconded by Ms. Mortenson, to approve consent agenda items A, B, C, D, and E. Further discussion, hearing none, all those in favor signify with "aye."
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. So next, we move on to our public hearings. We have one public hearing, it's on vacation of drainage and utility easements at 2640 and 2648 Saunders Lake Drive North.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. This is directly related to your consent agenda item you just approved, 4C. As a formality, we do have to officially hold a public hearing in order to vacate the public and drain, the public drainage and utility easements over that property line that's being adjusted per the simple subdivision request that you just approved. We do need to hold that public hearing. We've notified the commissioner of the Department of Natural Resources because this drainage and utility easement does end at a public water body. We received no, no comments from the commissioner for this request, likely because we are, we are gaining new drainage and utility easements over the property lines, new locations. So really, not a, not a big change here, minor change, but a formality that we do need to go through and, and hold a public hearing on this evening.
Basically, the utility easement is just changing along with the property line?
Correct.
So, pretty straightforward. Okay, does council have any questions or staff? Hearing none, then I will open the public hearing, if anybody is here this evening wishing to speak for or against this action. I don't think so. So with that, then, I will close the public hearing and take it back to the council. We're looking for a resolution to approve the vacation of the drainage and utility easements at 2640 and 2648 Saunders Lake Drive North.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, a motion has been made by Ms. Bruce, and seconded by Ms. Mortenson, to approve resolution number 05-17. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with "aye."
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. So that concludes our public hearings this evening. We'll move on to our business items. So first, it's approve our city meeting calendar for 2017. Ms. Linquist, is that you?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Every year, the council reviews and approves a calendar of city meetings so that city officials, staff, and residents may know what to expect for the upcoming year. Please note that the calendar that's in your packet is in accordance with the city code, policies, and past practices. If a regular meeting date falls on a holiday, the meeting will, the next meeting will be the next business day. So if a holiday falls on Monday, the next business day will be Tuesday, such as what we're doing tonight. City council typically cancels public meetings close to both Independence Day and the Christmas holidays each year. So there will be only one scheduled council meeting in July and December. The planning commission typically does not meet in December. So if you look at your calendar, today is a Tuesday following a holiday in Monday. The next one will be, also in January, where the, the city offices will be closed on the 16th, so our meeting will be on the 17th, which will be a Tuesday. We'll have the same situation in February, the 20th, the offices will be closed, so we'll have our meeting on the 21st. The next one will be in May, well, that's not, I just wanted to point out that we have Thursday on May 20th.
Yep.
So everybody is aware of that. In July, there will not be a meeting on July 3rd, and the holiday is actually technically Tuesday, but we're not gonna have the holiday, we're not gonna have the meeting the day before the holiday. August, I also want to point out, National Night Out will be Tuesday, August 1st. In September, city offices will be closed for Labor Day, so our next meeting will be that, that following day on Tuesday. And then in December, we won't have a regular work session or a regular council meeting on the 18th. We will have the first meeting in December, but not the second one.
Okay. And then will this calendar and schedule be posted on our website?
Yes.
Okay.
We will get it posted on our website.
So people can also, they don't have to memorize it tonight?
Correct.
They can go to our website?
Yes.
Okay.
And then also, on the calendar, there's also land use application deadlines, the planning commission meetings are also on there, and also the planning, planning and parks are both on there, too.
Right. Good, thank you. Any questions? There, if I can ask Mr. Abel, I do believe there's a possibility we may not have a park or a planning commission meeting in January?
Correct, Madam Mayor. We haven't received any official land use applications, so what we're considering is just canceling those, those meetings in January.
Okay, so the first meetings wouldn't, for parks and planning, wouldn't be until potentially February?
Correct.
So, okay. So should we keep them on the calendar as presented?
Yes, Mayor and council generally will, will keep all the meetings as the clerk just pointed out, and then just cancel them as needed.
All right.
Versus the opposite way, drying addams a lot, a lot more.
Right. And just kind of FYI, so staff can cancel planning and park commission meetings, I believe, but the city, it would have to be by a city council action resolution to cancel council meetings. So just, so we know. All right, so with that, I'm looking for a motion to approve resolution number 0617, approving the city meeting calendar for 2017 as presented.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Ms. Thole made the motion, and Mr. Maliter seconded that. All those in favor signify with "aye."
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 5-0.
Okay, so I guess the next one's mine, too.
Okay.
This one is regards to the annual city council appointments and designations. Every year, the city council needs to make its annual appointments and designations. As discussed during the workshop earlier this evening, the council made recommendations for the different appointments and designations, and this is what the council had discussed during the workshop. The acting city mayor for 2017, council member Thole, the economic development, your EDA, is all the council members. The personnel committee would be Mayor Whalen, council member Thole, and city administrator Barone. Planning commission is rotating from all the council members. Same thing with parks. The police communications committee would be Whalen, Falls, and Barone. The fire advisory committee for St. Boniface, the 2017 appointee would be Maliter. The fire advisory committee for Mound would be, for 2017, would be Shannon Bruce, Mayor Whalen, and city administrator Barone. The Northwest Hennebun League of Municipalities, that's the mayor, so Mayor Whalen. The regional council of mayors would also be Mayor Whalen. The Lake Mantaka Conservation District, Brett Nickum agreed to do another three-year term. His term does not expire, actually until the end of January, so it would start on February 1st.
Right.
Minnehaha Creek Watershed District, Mayor Whalen. The Pioneer Sierra Creek Watershed Management Commission, the 2017 appointee would be Shannon Bruce, with an alternate of Pam Mortenson. Gillespie Center would be Mayor Whalen. The West Tonka Community and Commerce appointee would be, I believe it was Pam Mortenson?
Correct, yep.
Okay, and then the steering committee, comprehensive plan, Pam Mortenson and Mike Maliter, and the assistant lead inspector would be Gary Peters. For designation, do you want me to give the designations, or?
No.
No, it's all right.
Okay.
We're good.
Yeah, we're good, I think. So what I'm looking for all in agreement, any further discussion? We talked about this at the work session, so we should be good to go. So is there a motion to approve resolution number 0717, approving the appointments and designations as presented and discuss, presented by Ms. Linquist now, and also as we discussed at the work session?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion has been made by Ms. Mortenson, and seconded by Mr. Maliter. All those in favor signify with "aye."
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. And thank you, council members, for your service and stepping up to the plate for the additional jobs, so thank you very much. So we move on now to...
I do have one question.
Yeah.
For the rotating, for the planning, and the parks, when do we come up with our schedule for that?
The day before. No, just kidding. Typically, so I'll, I'll do February, because we're gonna be swearing in some new members, potentially. Well, actually, we will both. And then, so I'll do both parks and planning in February, and you can all decide which one wants to do parks and/or, you don't have to do park and planning in one month, you can do park one month and planning another time. So if you know you're gonna be gone on one of those dates, let staff know. But there's five of us, so I'm sure we can figure out, we don't have to figure it out tonight.
Usually, just to chime in, usually the first meeting, your first council meeting at the end, under staff reports, I'll ask who will take, who is available to take that month.
Yeah.
We do try to keep track of that, but, so we, we take care of your first meeting, knowing the parks meeting and the planning's coming up, and you can attend it then.
Okay, thank you.
Good question. Okay. So now we have, next, we have to approve our planning commission appointments. So we're gonna start with our, our planning and parks commission appointments. During our work session, we interviewed the seven applicants, and very excited to have seven applicants. We do have five positions. Did you, Mr. Barone, want to talk a little bit about the alternate that, you know, we talked about doing an alternate?
Sure, yes, mayor and council, as I spoke about at the workshop, the concept of having alternates for each of these two commissions was, was brought up. We have a neighboring city that did it, and I researched a little bit more about it, found out how they did it, and kind of came up with some criteria for what I thought might work here for at Minnetrista. The idea was to have up to two alternates in both the planning and parks commission, if, if we can appoint that many. Don't have to appoint that many, but if you can, you could go that high as two. It would be appointed, an alternate would be appointed to one commission only, not both. Alternates would receive the council or the commission packet, attend the commission meetings if they would like to, but they would not vote unless they were actually subbing in as a regular commission member, for somebody who may be absent for an illness or vacation or whatever. You could be moved into a regular commission status by the action of a city council in the future, in case somebody currently on the commission decides to resign or move out of the city, or whatever reason it is they're leaving their duties as a current commission member. And then the other thing that I suggested was, if we're going to have more than one alternate for a commission, that we number them one and two to create a pecking order, so to speak, so you know who would be up first, who would be up second, to fill in in case there's, needs to be somebody subbed for. And also, potentially, if somebody did leave one of the commissions, you, that alternate one would be potentially first in line to, to fill the remainder of that term. So those are all the, the ideas I came up with to create alternates for our city commissions. Currently, we don't have that in place, that would have to come back to the council in the form of an ordinance amendment at a future council meeting, hopefully the next meeting, but you can certainly keep that in mind as you go through designating who you would like to be your new planning commission, or who you would like to be re-up as a planning commissioner, parks commission member tonight, and then maybe signify to us with knowing that the, the alternate idea and ordinance amendment will be coming back, so you could, you could certainly keep that in mind. But we can't really appoint alternates tonight, so...
We can't appoint, we could just indicate which ones...
Correct.
...will be appointed, so, okay.
But you will have a choice to make tonight on which three you want to suggest to, by council, to be your new three planning commission members, and who you want to have as your two new park commissioners.
Right. Okay. I have to get to the right page here, I'm sorry. Did we have, we didn't have all the, so during our work session, we did interview all seven applicants. We have three openings on our planning commission currently. Of the applicants for the planning commission, we have one gentleman, John Chumperlin, that is currently on the planning commission and has indicated he would like to continue. So we have Mr. Chumperlin, we have Steve Livermore, we have Sarah Hussein, we have Don, Damian, Damian Young, and then we have Justin Forberg.
Forberg.
Forberg, okay. Those were the five applicants for the pla, I'm sorry, I'm so terrible with names. But I did remember your first name, so, all right. So with that, any, anybody have, want to start, weigh in? Do you have preferences?
I'll start.
Sure.
Since I've had the experience of working in direct with John on the planning commission over the past year, I would certainly like to see him as being one of our three.
Okay. Okay. I do think there's some value in experience and continuity, of course, especially since we're going through our comp plan right now, so that's, that's a good choice, I think, but anybody else want to weigh in? I mean, we have, we have three openings, so...
We just have a question unprocessed. Do we vote?
We have to vote.
Ultimately?
Yes, we will be voting, and everybody has, it's open voting, so everybody will know who we're voting for.
Okay.
Yes, yeah, and we'll be voting separately, in other words, all those in favor of Mr. Chumperlin, all those in favor of everybody, so we'll, we'll be going through that, yeah.
So we're gonna go down each candidate?
Yeah, I think we can maybe kind of discuss what we feel, who the best candidates are. Maybe, Ms. Bruce, you have somebody in mind that's your top choice, and then we can kind of go down the road and...
Mayor and council mayor offer a suggestion. Instead of voting on them individually, I think your discussion about which should be the three will probably, for at least for this commission, will be the ones, and then maybe a slate of candidates, you'll approve all three instead of individually, so if you can agree on which three it should be, we'll just propose that in the form of a motion.
Yes, but we have to vote on them.
I, yeah, you do, but I think if you vote on them as a slate of candidates, all three of them at once, it's, it's a vote for each of them to be appointed by you, the council members, so...
Right.
Instead of just starting with Mr. Livermore, starting with, then go to Mr. Chumperlin.
No, I, I'm sorry, I, I wasn't indicating that we should do that.
Okay.
But if there should be a, let's say, somebody thinks, if there should be a disagreement in terms of who...
Correct.
Then we would have to do it separately.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
But, you know, if you can agree on which three of the five, as you make, go through your discussion.
Right.
Same will apply to the parks commission, which two of the four.
Exactly. Okay.
Can I start by saying, all the candidates were really good.
All right.
And what a luxury to the city to have this many people interested in helping support our city. And these positions are great lead-ins to becoming a city council member, and I appreciate that. I didn't get the opportunity to do that, and it really does help to bring in somebody with a little bit of experience. I just want to put in a really good word for Justin Forbro. I have known him personally, and I got a lot of great references from family members that are also Minnetrista residents, and also friends that are, that know him, through work associations and so forth, so I just wanted to bring that to the table. I have worked, seen him work, and have gotten some great referrals. I agree with you on John. John, where are you, John? Good job. I was very involved with him in a couple situations, and I, I did help coax you a little bit, I hope, to step up, and you did a really good job, so thank you. And I want to just, and I'm sorry, I'm just gonna pretend you guys aren't here. Process of elimination, I would suggest maybe moving Sarah down to being in with the parks, being that is more where she thought she would like to be better placed. So if we take Sarah off of that list for the parks, it narrows that down a little bit, you know, up in that category. That was just my opinion. I think she fits the park commission with her qualifications really nicely.
Anybody else want to weigh in? Any of the candidates?
Planning and parks, at this point, or just folks are planning for right now?
Well, let's stick with planning first, and we do have a couple that could go in either, they indicated they'd be interested in either, so I think once we decide on the planning, that will then open up the, the park discussion.
Yeah, well, I would, I would echo what council member Mortenson said, that all, all very good candidates, and we're very, very fortunate for the city to be in that situation. Some cities don't have enough people step forward and who are willing to serve and commit their talents and their time, so thank you for doing that. It's, it's a difficult situation in that we don't have enough spots for all of the good candidates, but I, I really like the idea of having alternate spots available because there are times throughout the year where people are unable to attend the commission meetings, and, and so if you are selected, if we do pass having alternates, and if you are selected or appointed as one of those alternates, don't feel that you won't get an opportunity to serve, because I'm fairly confident that there will be someone at some point in time who can't attend some meetings, and you will be able to serve in that capacity. I would also just say to any of you who, if anyone doesn't get selected to serve, don't be discouraged. I originally, a few years back, applied to be on the planning commission and was not selected. They decided to renew those who had, were serving and have them serve again, and so I did not get the opportunity at that time, but I continued to participate by attending some of the meetings, then reapplied for the planning commission the following year, was selected to serve, and then about a year, year and a half later, ran for city council, and then was elected two years ago. So don't feel that if you don't get selected tonight, that that means no forever. Just be persistent. I liked what Mr. Chumperlin said, as far as your, your own makeup and background, professional background and personality, that things are more black and white, and you serve on the city, on a commissioner, on the council, and you find that that's just not the case. And so those are the challenging decisions that we are charged with making. I, I give credit to Mr. Livermore for having run for city council, and, and the, the rest of you for applying. I, I think you're all applicable candidates, qualified, and me personally, I just have a, a heart for those who have served in the military, so I think my, my third choice would be Mr. Young, so...
My only, I had, I do have a question... My only, I had, I do have a question. Currently, Mr. Forbrook, did get that right now, lives in Mound. Now, you are building a home and you will be moving back, but that may create somewhat of a challenge, because we would want the planning commission to be in place by February. And our ordinance, by ordinance, it says you have to reside in the city. So that's something we need to consider. It might be a really gr- really good spot for him to be one of the alternates. Because there's a very good possibility, we might have an opening sometime this year or next year, and then he could slide right in. But that would be, I think technically, we could not appoint him this evening to the city council. Is, is, am I correct in that, or?
Madam Mayor, you're correct. What the ordinance says is be a resident of the city. As has been pointed out, there's gray area, of course, when we're, when we're here to provide an example of that. I mean, he's technically right now, not a resident. He formerly was, and you've heard his situation. He's building a house, it'll be done in a month or two, so.
Yeah, that's, that's my concern.
Conversation with, with Mr. Forbrook when he was going to submit his application, explained the same thing to him, and said that that is a decision, though, that you as a council would, would need to make.
I did neglect to say that, that Mr. Forbrook would be my alternate selection for the planning commission and following councilmember Mortensen's suggestion to move Ms. Hussein to one of the parks openings.
Ms. Bruce?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I tend to value people that have lived in the community for a while, just because there's a sense of knowing what's going on and, and who the players are and, and how things work in Minutista. And I think some consideration, we might want to consider possibly making people alternates that haven't been here very long, and consider ones that have been here longer possibly being members. Suggestion.
Okay. Yeah.
I think I'd also like to add, just from my own personal experience, and I think we probably all relate, you really learn in the city when you run for office.
Yeah, yeah.
But you get to find a lot of neighborhoods you haven't known. And having, you know, Steve, just having gone through that process, I'm sure has developed quite more knowledge than he had in the past. So I would probably move that into, move him into my list of candidates as well, for that reason.
And I think that councilmember Bruce made a good point. I, I would add to your opinion that I think that there's value in having long-term residents, and those who are newer into the community as well, who, who see the community through different eyes.
Have a mix.
Yes.
Sure, but. Well, so far we've heard everybody is really good. And clear as mud. So, so far, what I've heard is Mr. Chumperlin would be probably a really good candidate. Years of experience, or years of living in the community, as well as already experienced on the planning commission. I too would kind of tend to be in favor of Steve Livermore joining the committee, commission. I've had an opportunity over the last couple months to meet with him and talk with him. This was during the campaign, and feel that he would be a great asset, not to say that no one else would be, because I think this is very difficult, because I think everybody that applied really, I mean truly, I'm not just saying that. It's a difficult decision. I, I would like to see Justin be one of the alternates, simply because of the living situation. I firmly believe that you will be a planning commission, full pledged commissioner very shortly, but without, but only being able to appoint three this evening to the actual commission. My, my preference would be Mr. Livermore and John Chumperlin, and I'm, I'm, boy, Damian fabulous, and of course Sarah as well. I'm, I'm really torn, because both of you would, would do great. So I guess maybe to, I would, my, I would lean a little bit more towards Sarah and maybe Damian as, as an alternate.
I'll, I'll chime in. I, I love Sarah's ability to communicate. I think she's very articulate, and she's someone that can, just comes off very professionally. And I think just communicating with people is a big part of being on the planning commission. So I, I would side with you with, with Sarah.
Anybody else? I mean, that would, so the ones I have would be Steve Livermore, John Chumperlin, and Sarah, with Justin and Damian as alternates. Is that agreeable? And then we just would need to decide, am I seeing yes or no's, or?
Read those again, Lisa.
Okay, I was saying Steve Livermore, John Chumperlin, and Sarah as the planning commissioners, with the two alternates being Justin and Damian, and we would then have to decide which one is one and which one is two.
Can you be an alternate on two commissions?
Well, hold on, we can't, we can't decide alternates right now, because we don't.
We don't need, no, we're not going to necessarily vote on that, because we need to bring that back via an ordinance. It just would be nice if the applicants kind of knew what was coming, so that, you know.
I think, though, if going to the, back to Mr. Brony's comment about the whole process, it certainly would be in favor of having alternates, but I think, to be fair to the entire community, I, I think we would have to treat that as a separate process, with separate notification, separate deadline, separate application, so that if there are others in the community that want to apply, now that we have the, or at some point would have an alternate process, I think we would, it'd be fair, it'd only be fair to open that up for everyone. I'm thinking not only those that are not aware of that, but also for those that are on the commissions now, that may not want to be on a commission in a full-time role, and rather switch their roles around and say, okay, I'm a planning commissioner now, but I really can't commit anymore, but I can still be an alternate. I, I just think the whole process of having that, I think is good, but I think we need to keep that separate. And I'm certainly welcome to have everyone who is not appointed come back, and maybe we just take their application as part of that. We don't have to make them reapply. But I, I really think it's, it's fair to everybody to make sure that that's open and available to everybody. So I don't want to, I guess I'm reluctant to say that we're going to appoint someone when we haven't gone through that formal application process. That's my concern.
Okay, anybody else want to weigh in on that? I, I see the pros and cons. I mean, we've had seven applicants that said, hey, I'm willing to put in whatever it takes. And then to say, well, let's open it up again for alternates. So if you didn't really want to commit your full time, now you can commit part time. If somebody is willing to come forward and say, I'm willing to put in the time, I think they should at least be given first consideration. Again, if you go through the process, you might get more, you might not get more. I just think it would be nice if we can send the people away tonight, knowing what, what the deal is.
And I, I also think if, if you go through another application process, you may risk losing the people that we have here tonight as well.
That might be, right, that's true.
I'm just aware of other people that would have applied had they met the deadline, so just want to make sure.
And you know, we're gonna, the other thing is, if we, if we decide to have two alternates, let's say for the planning commission, and we get an opening on the planning commission, we may have another opening for an alternate. So that can then open up the process again. So this isn't a done deal. It'll be, it can be ongoing too, but.
This is a, essentially an annual deal. I mean, we, we have, and I'll explain one little caveat here for the planning commission in a second, but we have people whose terms are up, because the terms are staggered every year. So the goal of doing, in my mind, the goal of doing this alternate process was to take advantage of the fact that we had so many people that are interested right now. They, they took the time to apply by the deadline that we did advertise, and I think it was open for a good month or so. So there was plenty of opportunity for people to apply, and these are the folks that did. So that was kind of the whole point, let's not just send them out the door with nothing to do. We have a chance to keep them, so, and we'll be doing this again in 12 months, so.
The other thing I'd like to add here is, we probably should, although I realize we'll vote separately on these two commissions, if we go down the path of putting alternate, two alternates on each one, if we appoint Sarah to the planning commission, we are taking her off.
Correct.
So we won't have two alternates on the park.
That's right. We don't, I'm just saying, we don't have to have two alternates. But if, if we wanted to, we could, and yes, if they're serving on the planning commission, they wouldn't serve as an alternate or as a park commissioner. I think that's understood.
Well, I think, given that, you know, if we appointed Steve, John, and Damian here on the planning commission, and had Justin as an alternate, Sarah could be an alternate on either one. Whereas if we don't appoint Damian to the planning commission, I guess we don't have Justin as an alternate, I guess, for the park as an option. So this is something to consider.
Okay, anybody else want to weigh in?
I didn't realize that with Justin being in Mound, that would possibly be.
It's kind of a technicality, but I'm sorry.
It is. So I guess, and if we feel confident that there will probably, there will probably be an opening within a short time. I guess if we weigh this in and go with Steve and John and Damian, and being Sarah again, had interest in the parks, moving her down and being the alternate there, and then having Justin serve as an alternate.
We could have two alternates on the planning commission. Two, see.
But then two people would have to serve on, I mean, one person would have to serve on the parks and planning as alternates.
No, 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 we have two openings on the park, and we have a number of individuals apply for that. So we have Elise Fogel, and we have Patty Dykoski, and we have Sarah Hussein, and Damian said he would also serve. So we have four people. So if, if you, if we approve Steve Livermore, John Chumperlin, and either Sarah or Damian to planning, that still leaves two openings on the park. Okay, so that's why I'm saying, let's focus on the planning first, and then look at, and I think, and then look at parks. Because we have plenty of applicants to fill, fill both. The only two that applied solely for parks are Elise Fogel and Patty Dykoski. Those are the only two that applied solely for parks. So we have, we have basically five people for, for planning. So I'm, I'm hearing a couple things. I'm hearing John Chumperlin, Steve Livermore, and then I'm hearing two people, Sarah or Damian. So I know Shannon has weighed in, I've kind of weighed in. Who, where do we stand in terms of Sarah and Damian?
I would go for Damian, I would go with Damian. Again, all qualified professional candidates, but as far as where people would get slotted in, I would, I would do Steve Livermore, John Chumperlin, and Damian Young.
Okay, and then Ms. Mortensen?
I would go with that as well.
Okay, and Mr. Malator?
Ditto.
Ditto, okay, so.
I'm gonna throw you a curveball. So you've got your three, that's your slate. Planning commission terms are four years. We have, one of the three terms is a three-year term. It's again to fill a slot that somebody left, so.
I think Mr. Livermore raised his hand and said he would be willing to do the three-year term.
Okay, there you go.
Alright.
I just wanted, otherwise we're coming back to you next time.
So we have Mr. Chumperlin for a four-year, Damian Young for a four-year, and Mr. Livermore for a three-year for the planning commission. Is, do I hear a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor signify with aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. So do you want to talk about parks first, and then talk about alternates for the planning commission?
Sure.
Okay, so parks, we have a number of people, Patty Dykoski, and then now Damian Young is no longer an applicant for the park commission. And that leaves Patty Dykoski, Sarah Hussein, and Elise Fogel. Thank you, gentlemen. Any, any comments? And we have two, two seats, so we have three people, two seats.
Just for clarification, Dyoski and Vogel?
Dykoski.
Dykoski and Vogel are both.
They're currently on the park commission, yes, yeah, yeah.
My, my initial thought, again, probably just mixing the two a little bit. I, I would be inclined to repoint Patty and Elise both, put Sarah as the alternate here, and Justin as the alternate on the planning commission.
Okay.
I agree with that.
I agree also.
Alright, okay, then make your motion.
I will motion that Dykoski and Vogel be reappointed to the park commission.
Okay, and then, okay, is there a second for that?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to appoint Patty Dykoski and Elise Fogel to the park commission. All those in favor signify with aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion passes, and we have Sarah Hussein that will be appointed next time, well, once we get the ordinance done, as the alternate to the parks. And, and then we have Justin, who will be appointed as the alternate to the planning commission. So thank you very much. I think that concludes our appointments, and we'll bring back those alternates then next time. Alright. So moving on, we now have professional service agreement with WSB for 2017 Mill and Overlay project. Is that Mr. Hornby?
Correct.
Alright.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. In your packet is a professional services proposal from WSB. This is for the 2017 Mill and Overlay project, that's City Project 01-17. Council did, along with the budget, CIP budget, approve pavement management plans for 2017 to 2019. And part of that is the Mill and Overlay project, which is Maple Forest this year. And WSB has provided a proposal for the design, bidding, and construction services. The design phase is estimated, or is actually a not-to-exceed fee at $9,800. And that is a hourly not-to-exceed, so you, it's not a lump sum, you only pay the number of hours.
Up to, up to that amount.
To that amount, does not exceed that amount without council authorization. And then the construction is estimated, we estimate that because there's, obviously there's items such as last year's Mill and Overlay, where there was a problem with one of the roadways, we had to go through and redesign, and added more time. So we do estimate, and we try to estimate on the conservative side, but that construction service is estimated at $12,800. And staff does recommend approving the resolution number 10-17, which would approve the professional service proposal with WSB for the 2017 Mill and Overlay project.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of council?
Not a question, but a thought just occurred to me. As, as Paul said, Maple Forest. As, you know, our, our road repair dollars are so valuable, and we've got so many roads to, to spread them across. Maybe one thing that we want to take into consideration in the future is how many houses are actually on that street? Because it occurred to me that on Maple Forest, I think there are, there are three on the cul-de-sac, and then there's one on the corner, and then three more. So maybe seven homes on this street, and so.
It does serve as Hermitage Shores, though, as well.
It does, that is correct, yes, good point.
That is a through street.
Yes.
And I think what they do, and Paul, you can chime in here, I think what they do is they look at the roads and they say, okay, which roads can we do Mill and Overlay on right now, so that it will maintain the road versus letting it go to a point where we then have to do reclamation or reconstruct? So that's, that's one of the reasons, but I understand your point.
I, I'd like to, to consider that, I think, a number of people in the Hermitage Shores area use that street as they, if they're coming from the Mound.
Right, right.
Direction versus highway.
Or going out too.
Yes, right.
Okay, so, yeah.
Again, this is kind of along the same comments as we made. Not directly related to WSB's proposal here, but in looking at Maple Forest, I noticed immediately to the north, within a block, there's another street, immediately to the south, there's another street that were, I assume from the pavement man, from the sampling of the pavement, it's probably in better condition. But it would be nice to see some consideration in tackling these projects on a neighborhood, more neighborhood basis. Another example of that was this past year, when we did, was it Crestview or Crestridge?
Crestridge, yeah.
Crestridge. Because now those residents were subjected to construction. If we ever do Minneapolis, they're going to go through it again.
Right.
Same thing with these folks. Something similar, when you look at Bayview, Bayview was done two years ago, but right next to them is Jennings Cove, and I believe they're built.
They're not connected, though.
They're not connected, but they're built approximately at the same time. I think it leaves people to kind of wonder, it looks, from an outside perspective, a little bit haphazard. So I'm wondering if we can give some thought. So, I'm wondering if we can give some thought going forward, not specific to this proposal here.
Right, well, let, you know, I'll let Paul weigh in real quick on this, because there's more to it than you think. So, yeah, go ahead.
So, we go through, every so many years, we go through, we rate all the roadways, and then determine a condition, and then project, we use some pretty complicated software to do this, but we project their condition moving forward. So, maybe, in this case, we, angry roads were rated in 2012. So, we're getting at a point where, you know, some of these projections are, you know, we want to be able to re-rate these roads in 2017, so I have another pavement management report to set the next capital improvement phase for the next three to five years. And so, what we do is look at the actual condition of the roadway. If we, the reason we want to do that, and so it does appear to be haphazard, but it's an efficient way to perform timely maintenance, so that, you know, you do the correct maintenance application at the right time, and that helps save money. If you do it early, you know, those dollars could be used somewhere else on a road that's more needed, so, you know, has more of a need to it, so. And that's why we, you know, it might seem to be haphazard, but that's the rationale behind it.
Well, the biggest other part that we, it's pretty, obviously, is the funding piece, as far as, you only have so many dollars allocated each year by our budget, and pavement management plan that gets set, that I think, we've done a good job of putting more dollars to it each year in the last several years, but it's, it's still gonna take some time to probably, and that's where we're phasing in, trying to add some more dollars, excuse me, each year, is just the, it takes a lot of money to do all of it.
But your, your point, I think we understand where you're, I understand where you're coming from. Point well made, but we can't, at this point in time, with our finances, we can't kind of do it by neighborhood, because there's gonna be, we're then going to be spending dollars prematurely on roads, and not spending it on roads that we need to, so that's why it's haphazard.
Right, I think, just a couple of comments on that. I would like to at least, I understand your methodology, and I certainly agree with that. I think, though, it'd be good to look at the adjoining streets to say, are they close to being in that same range? The second point, when I used to live in the city of Crystal, they made a very comprehensive plan to segment, to redo all the streets, because they're a much older city.
Right.
And they said, okay, we're gonna do this group this year, and two more years, we're gonna do this, and at least then people could figure out what's coming, so. That's a little bit where I'm coming from, because at least then you could say, okay, I know in two years where we're coming.
And we do actually have that.
Yes, we've actually mapped them out by rating. So, you can look at it most visually, and then by, you know.
And we're gonna actually be talking about this in more depth. This was, you know, has been on the agenda for a while, on the schedule for a while, but we are gonna talk about possibly adding a couple other options for 2018 versus what's on the schedule. We're also designated 20,000, or whatever it was, to do a study to re, regrade the roads to make sure that we're gonna be doing the roads that need it. So, we, it's just, we're not there yet, but we will be doing that this year.
I just, just, points considered, I think this proposal's fine.
And, and just a comment on, well, Councilor Malator's comment. While it may appear haphazard, there's plenty of thought that goes, goes into it, and I know you're, but they are certainly scattered.
Right, right.
And, and so then it's a matter of how, okay, which roads can we do for X number of dollars? But also, to your point, that is one of the reasons why Tuxedo is getting done, along with Enchanted Lane.
Right.
Correct?
And we, we actually even heard that comment at the public informational meeting, where I think there was a couple of residents said, oh, my God, we had to drive through this part that mounded for two years, and now you even put this on our plate as well. So, we understand that.
Right.
It would have probably been better if they all were done at the same time. But in this case, there's, in that particular case, now there's two cities that are.
Right, that's a little different, yeah, at least with an O in.
We are, we are trying to work with Shorewood, though, to try and get them to do their section of Enchanted, of Enchanted Lane out on the island, so we're, we're trying to do that, so, anyway. So, back to the resolution, so approving the professional services agreement with WSB for the 2017 Mill and Overlay Project. Where do we stand on that? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, are there any other questions pertaining to that? Okay, sorry, I just want to stay focused on that, but, good questions, good discussion, seriously. Okay, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion passes. Thank you, don't leave, okay. Don't leave, okay, motion passes, five oh, thank you. I saw some people wanting to leave, and I wanted this gentleman to stay for some discussions that we're gonna have. So, with that concludes our business items, and we'll move on to staff reports.
Thank you, Mayor, I have a few items, but before I give my items, I think Mr. Hornby has one announcement he'd like to give us.
Okay.
Mayor and council, in December, you had passed a resolution requesting a variance from state aid standards for the Halsted Drive project.
Yes.
And I did get an email last week that indicated that that was approved.
Oh, great.
So, we did get commissioner approval for that.
Great, thank you. One of the things we will just touch on briefly is the water tower site, correct, or land purchase, just briefly?
Yep, one of the items I talked about, yep.
Okay.
Few items to inform the council of. Glenn Ring is our new public works employee. He began today. As council members that were, mayor council that were on the city council last year know that we've been in the process trying to hire a couple of public works employees. We were successful in getting Mr. Ring here. We do have another process that has concluded as far as the application taking. We do have interviews scheduled for Wednesday, January 11th, so we're moving forward, trying to hire that second person. We just weren't able to do some of the first pool of applicants, so we cast our net again. State Senator David Osmick will be here to speak to our city council on Tuesday, January 17th, our next city council meeting. That's subject to change, they just started their legislative session today, but as of now, that's the night he is scheduled to come here. If, if he's not, you'll probably see that indicated on your agenda for that night. But that's what the plan is as of today. I did ask council members, I think I forgot to ask Ms. Bruce, but I will ask, I'm looking for a couple of things. Wanted to find out if there's gonna be any absences that you might have for city council meetings, but I'll probably end up sending all of you an email to find out if you have any vacations during the first quarter of the year. One of the, the reason I'm asking is for absences, is that we will be probably starting a strategic planning process again, since we have a new council, so we can kind of get to know each other and kind of see where we're at and where we're going. Typically, those are not the same nights of city council meetings, so I do know where your absences are for council, but probably have to check in with you about other vacation times, so. I'll be doing that, hopefully sending you an email yet this week.
We're looking to do that sometime in February.
That's the goal right now, so we'll see above calendars and see what happens there. And then the final item is just a follow-up, a verbal follow-up on the water treatment project, and more particularly, the water tower in the Hunter's Crest area. I know, I don't know the exact date, but Mayor Whalen and Mr. Hornby went to a HOA meeting.
No, that's the other one.
Okay.
I had two meetings. I went to, we had a neighborhood meeting with some of the residents. Yes, with some of the members of Hunter's Crest, and I can, yeah.
Yep, and so the, we gave the mayor a map, kind of on that parcel of land that we've been in consideration of buying, and I think it was kind of an overwhelming no, we don't want the water tower there, so. We did ask and get granted a extension on the purchase agreement through the end of March, and we'll be working on that, and there's a number of covenants that we still have to work through. And it probably will require us to end up talking with some of the folks over in the Hunter's Crest area, possibly their, their HOA board and things of that nature. Bottom line is someday, there's gonna have to be a water tower over there. I know nobody really wants to live by a water tower, they're actually really good neighbors. They're all neighbors, but good neighbors. But, you know, it's, we're no different than any other city in the state. You don't put the water infrastructure in until the people show up, and that's where we're at. And everybody else is in the, in the state, is in other places in the country, had to go through where to put the water tower. Nobody wants it, but everybody wants to have the water. We also have fire suppression issues there that we were trying to rectify with finding a location, so. There's never a great location, you end up pitting neighbor against neighbor, but it does have to go there someday, so.
Well, and we, and I know I talked with you, Mr. Broney, regarding possible other locations, too.
Correct, and so we'll be reexploring some other locations, and, and trying to sit down with those folks and find out what's feasible or not feasible. And if this site's not feasible, unfortunately, we're gonna still have to keep working at it, because we still need a water tower. Eventually, another water treatment plant in that area, so this is not gonna go. This is a really good option, financially and all other reasons, but we'll see if we can make it work. But we got a few months to at least work on it.
And the reason, just to clarify, the reason for the delay in the extension of the purchase agreement is because of those title issues.
Title issues, right.
So, there's, there's a couple of things here, but, but mainly, it's the title issue that we're, we're dealing with and having to work through.
Yeah, we know, wherever we put the water tower, we may have some people that don't like it where it's gonna be put, so. But unfortunately, with this piece of land, you know, right now, we have some things we need to overcome as far as the title's concerned, so.
So, when do you think, when will we be, this is just kind of a report, kind of FYI.
This is just to let you know, because I sent you the.
So, when would it be brought back for more?
They said no, and then they said yes, that was just miscommunication on the banks part. But we do have the extension, so everything is kind of the same as it was, and the extension deadline was mid-December, now it's the end of March, and so we're still looking at things. That's obviously what it's gonna come down to, if we can make it work there or not, but, you know, we'll, we'll explore other.
So, staff will continue working with the HOA board, or?
We may have to talk with them soon, just to kind of give them some information. But we also are gonna work internally with engineers and attorneys to kind of figure out what, what our next steps will be before we bring it back to the council for some action, so.
Okay, okay. Any other?
Lot of moving parts in this.
Yeah, any other staff reports?
That's all I have, I don't know if anybody else to my right has anything.
I have a question, did the water treatment start up at the end of December?
Uh, no, they're in the process of working on bucks. In fact, I just talked with Mike Powett today, he said they're gonna try to turn it on today. I haven't heard if they did or not, but they're still working on some things, I know.
Tonight, the water, treated water was be going out of the plant.
Yeah.
Yay, and that is the north plant. That's the north plant, not the south plant.
That is the north plant, yes.
Well, I, I'll do a quick report, because I know some people here might be interested in this. So, yes, on December 12th, I met with about 15, 16 people from Hunter's, the Hunter's Crest neighborhood. Amongst the things that we talked about, of course, the water tower, and yes, they are not in favor of the location, and I pass that on to staff, and we're gonna work through some of these issues. The other thing, so a couple of other things that they brought out and asked, and so I don't know where we go from here, but, one, they asked about turn lanes on 92 and Towns Edge Road. And because there's more traffic on 92, and there's more traffic now turning into, and Towns Edge Road from 92 into Hunter's Crest, Hunter, you know, we're wondering, it is a safety issue. We're wondering what would the cost be, what would the process be, how, where do we go from, from here?
We would have to contact Hennepin County and talk to them about the potential for it, and they would likely issue or do, perform a traffic study to see if it's warranted.
Okay.
So, that's, that's really the process for doing that.
Okay, so, do we contact Hennepin County, then?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, okay. And then the other thing, I think I mentioned to you, Paul, just in the new parking lot in Lila Park, there's these two big light fixtures, and they're really bright. Is there any way of putting some shields over them to do a down-directional lighting versus a skylighting?
Or reduce the light bulb?
Well, they do, it was a cutoff shield on it, and our landscape architect was looking into the options for that light, for those lights.
So, you're looking into that, and we'll figure that out soon, all right.
Is there, if I could ask a follow-up question to your, as far as the traffic on 92, is there a cost to having Hennepin County do a study?
They have a cost participation policy.
Not to do the study?
No.
The traffic count is what I mean, to do a traffic count.
There would be, there would be a cost share, I think, for the city, for the project as a whole, yes.
For the project?
Well, I'm gonna say the project as a whole, which would be preliminary design, traffic studies, include all that, so yes. They would, they would charge the city for it.
Yeah, and my, my point is, as we are wanting to be good stewards of where we're spending our money, and that sort of, you know, justified expense between Mr. Hornby and Chief Falls, have you had reports on those roads, or concerns that have been brought to your attention in the past?
Madam Mayor, members of council, I'm not aware of, of a whole lot of complaints directly to the police department regarding that intersection. I know that there is more traffic there today than there was in years past, which will probably likely continue as they continue to develop. But I, specifically, I'm, I'm not aware of too many complaints, directly to us, anyway.
I think the first step is just to contact the county, find out what the process, yeah.
Well, what we can do, Madam Mayor and council, is, is, that's exactly right. The study, I mean, we know what the traffic counts are, we can get a general sense as to whether they'd allow it or not, we can give you projected costs. It is gonna cost the city money if you want to put a turn lane there.
And so, that's, that's what we would want to know, is projected costs, and then, since it's a county road, could that come out of state aid money, or does that have to come out of, you know, where the funds would come from? I just have a discussion about it, with, with that information, yeah. So, so then, also, on the 13th, I attended the Rotary Annual Christmas Lunch, so very nice, and, and I believe your daughter was there? Yeah, for, in the choir, or?
Mad jazz.
Yes, mad jazz, so they did a wonderful job. And then on the 15th, this is one Mr. Broney was referring to. That is the one that Paul Hornby and I, it was the Trillium Bay Home Owner Association Annual Meeting, and we did go to that, very fun, very nice evening. So, a couple of things came out of that. They asked a couple of things, so they said, could Lotus Drive be a 25 mile an hour speed limit? And we said, we don't know, usually, you know, we explained to them about how that normally works, but Paul was checking on that. And again, we don't have to discuss it now, but I just want to let you know some of their concerns. They also asked, now, see, Lotus Drive is gonna be reconstructed next, next year, 2017, this year, or in 2017?
It was scheduled for this year, Met Council's reevaluating the project, but I think they're still planning to construct that, so.
Okay, so they're planning on doing the sewer system, and also then they would, with that, they would reconstruct Lotus Drive. With that, they would also have to tear off the intersection of 44 and Lotus. So, they were saying, well, since there will be additional traffic from Woodland Cove, and that intersection is being torn up anyway, maybe now is the time to look at adding turn lanes. And so, again, that would be a question to the county, a question to Met Council, what, what would our cost participation be?
To the county road, you're saying?
Right.
Yes, okay. Because the intersection of Lotus Drive was approved as part of the Woodland Cove development.
Okay.
They specifically wanted no turn into Trillium, but we, okay.
No turn into Trillium, no, at the intersection of 44. So, if you're on 44, turning into Lotus, or either way, left or right?
Good, as you know, Madam Mayor, County Road 44 is subject to be reconstructed here in the next two years as well.
And that's why we thought we should mention it to the county and to Met Council, all of these entities, to make sure that, and then, does the county know about Woodland Cove and, and all of that? So, we want to make sure that maybe if, I mean, if it's not in the plans, it maybe should be considered, at least. So, so those are some things, let's see, and then they asked if there could be a designated crosswalk, you know, it's the lines with the, across Lotus from the end of that trail.
Correct.
Yeah.
That trail?
There's a trail that goes along County Road 44, and then it comes down, and it crosses Lotus before it goes into the park, and they're saying, it might be easy enough to put the stripes and, and sign for pedestrian crossing. Since it is a trail, and you come down this hill, and it's connecting to the park, that seems to be a pretty simple thing.
However, from some articles I read, I think it was last summer with Mound, and where their, that trail goes across over by their park, if the, it's my understanding, if there are stripes on the blacktop, that means that the pedestrian has the right of way, where if there aren't stripes, then the traffic has the right of way, and the pedestrians need to yield, and it would seem that even though it's a path, pedestrians should need to yield there, but I don't know. should need to yield there, but I don't know, I mean, check into it and...
Essentially, that's a, a summary of it, there's more to it, the pedestrian just can't keep walking, you know? They have to also pay attention to where the traffic is before they enter the road, but the crosswalk, uh, if there's a pedestrian at the crosswalk, traffic is to yield, so...
Um, and then, um, I'll probably be talking to, um, our park commissioner, Penny Steele, and, um, I received a letter and she said if you'd like to do a tour, so I thought I would take her up on that. Um, and then, um, uh, there is no Pinehurst or Creek Watershed Commission, there was none in December, so, um, nobody had to go. And then January fourth, tomorrow evening, there is a neighborhood meeting at six thirty, and it's for a development, um, proposal at the corner of Sunny Field and County Road one ten north, and the developer is looking to potentially have it, um, rezoned, which would mean a comp plan amendment, is that correct, Mr. Abel?
Um, I believe there's several options that the developer's considering, and that's, that's the point of the neighborhood meeting.
Okay.
That, that may be one of them.
Right. So, um, staff had suggested doing a neighborhood meeting, getting some input from the neighbors, um, to find out what, what they're, um, what they would prefer, what they like or don't like, kind of thing.
Do we have, do we have staff representation at that?
We do not.
No.
Nope, it's, it's strictly run, run by the developer, we've invited, you know, you as councilman, it's been posted as a public hearing, uh, we invited you as council and planning commissioners to attend if you'd like, but, um, it is purely applicant-driven meeting.
And we would just be there to observe, or if residents have questions, ask us questions, but...
I'm, I'm planning to go.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think, I think four of us will be there, so, we'll be well represented, so that's a good thing, that's a good thing. And it's always good to be there and know firsthand what the residents are saying.
Yes.
I, it's not that I'm saying we don't, you know, trust the developer, but sometimes we hear things differently, so I think that's a good thing. And then, um, as Mr. Broney, um, suggested, um, we wanna do a team building strategic planning session, um, sometime in February, so, look at your calendars.
At the same company we had at last time?
I...
Probably not.
Probably not. So, that's, that's all I have. Um, anybody else have any reports?
I do not. It was a nice Christmas and New Year's holiday.
It was. Nice break.
Steering Committee or Comp Plan Committee, uh, we did not have a December meeting either. Um, however, there is a great meeting coming up on January tenth, it's the Community Visioning Meeting, it's an open house to the public to hear comments on the draft twenty forty land use map.
Okay.
Um, so, it will be a really good meeting for a lot of residents.
January, January tenth, yeah, yeah.
Good idea. Uh, six thirty, eight thirty at the police department training room.
Okay, police training, training room.
Yes. And then also I attended, uh, as an alternate, uh, to Mayor Whalen on twelve fourteen to the northwest, Hennepin League of Municipalities, uh, and Senator Osmick was there speaking as well. Uh, he talked to us, uh, a little bit about the, um, their focus and, uh, what they're looking at coming up now with the new session and the, um, shift of the, uh, power, I guess you'd call it, in the House and the Senate. Uh, a lot of focus remains on transportation.